Regular meeting of the resources and infrastructure committee to order. We have a quorum, all five committee members are present. A little bit of a chair report. I'd like to briefly update the committee on some notable actions from the February thirteenth CCSD Board of Directors meeting. In addition to the regular monthly reports from the sheriff, fire chief, and department managers. The CCSD Fire Chief Michael Burkey, Swarren, new fire captain Greg McGill, and safer firefighter Henry Wright. As we have two members of our fire department. The board received a presentation from Kevin Burke on the water reclamation facility adapted management plan quarterly biological baseline monitoring for the summer and the fall of 2024, and this helps establish a baseline, a biological baseline. For when we operate the WRF, so we have something to compare to, to know what effect the WRF is having on. Yeah, if any on our endangered species. The pros ad hoc committee on the community park plan gave a presentation on the conceptual design for the East Ranch Community Park. And I'd like to mention that next Wednesday on the twenty sixth. The restroom for the community park is going to be installed. The crane is supposed to be there at eight thirty and everyone is welcome to come and observe that.
Twenty six.
Yeah, twenty six at eight thirty.
We come tomorrow.
You cannot park at the dog park in that parking lot. You'll have to park on Main Street or somewhere around there and walk across the pedestrian.
Yeah, at the Blue Burn.
The board received public input on the 2025 strategic plan and reviewed the agenda for the March third strategic plan workshop. The board approved the budget adjustment for ESRI, GIS services. You know what ESRI stands for?
I'm not sure what ESRI is.
Somebody, you know, somebody said in the meeting.
It was a huge law.
I couldn't hear it.
I have to see it again.
I know we don't like acronyms without the explanation, but I couldn't catch that. The board approved the agreement with Astera for satellite based leak detection services for water and wastewater. And if you remember, we had two, two R and I meetings where we discussed that. And the board did agree to go forward with the recommended program.
Proposals, we submitted a proposal for like a what a two year term.
Environmental Systems Research Institute.
The board amended the bylaws to establish a new standing committee on fire protection and appointed Director Tom Gray as the chairperson. Each of the standing committee chairpersons discussed the applications they received for their five positions on their committee. And made the recommendations to the board as to which of the applicants they proposed to fill those positions. I'd like you to know that the board voted unanimously on the chairperson's recommendations and appreciate the team view that are returning. And our two new committee members.
Seasoned members.
And congratulations for the unanimous approval. Okay, um, I don't need to put review of the bylaws and the purpose on this committee on the next meeting. Because we have a lot to discuss at this meeting. So, um, the next thing on the agenda. Is the election of the vice chair and the secretary. And I'm going to start with the hardest one first. Like I said before. Um, Ms. Dodson sent out in advance a really nice outline where all you have to do is fill in the blanks. So you put in the establishment of quorum, you just put who the committee members are that are present. I like to have on there also what members of the public are present. Okay, um, the staff present is already on here. If the remote, as in general manager McElany is. And is Eric listed on this? He's not on here anyway, so you would put remote next to his name. And then everyone else that's present is already on there. You say that I gave a chair report. You know, you just basically fill in the blanks. Who made the motion, who seconded it, how many ayes and how many nays you can. And if there's something we recommended to the board. So it's fairly simple. So. I need a volunteer or a nomination.
No pressure.
Strawers.
Okay.
We need the jeopardy theme music.
I just wanted to, for me, unfortunately, my hearing is getting so bad that I'm having trouble following things a little bit, so.
You can always watch the Zoom recording afterwards at whatever volume you need.
I know, it sounds like a pathetic attempt to get out of it, but I'd be willing to try it to help out.
Okay, um, so can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Webb?
I saw. Oh, yeah. You second that one.
Yeah, I second it right away.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Howell and a second from Ms. Meeks. I'm going to do a roll call vote. And remember Howell. And remember Meeks. Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Mr. Graham. Mr. Seaver.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. I'm going to pass this down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to be the secretary, so. I mean, I go through all of this anyway, because I have to write a report to the board. Okay.
Is that, is that a one year term or is that a two year?
For this meeting.
It ended up being two years the last time. Ms. Dodson, how often do we do this? Isn't it once every two years when we start restart the committee? It's a two year term. Okay, but you know what? If we get to the end of one year, somebody else announces to take over for you, we can work that out.
Pass the baton.
Yeah. Okay, so now I need a volunteer for the, for the committee vice president. Oh, okay, Mr. Seaver volunteer. He's been the committee vice president for the last two years and really hasn't had to run a meeting for me. So I have a motion to appoint Mr. Seaver as the vice chair. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Meeks, who's the second. Okay. Mr. Meeks.
Aye.
Mr. Grandma.
Aye.
Mr. Seaver.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of that. I don't have any hands up. Okay. Um, let's see here. I didn't announce who we had in person and online. And I should have done that, I did by establishment of quorum. So we have committee members Don Howell, Mark Meeks, Jim Webb, Jim Grimald, and Stephen Seaver present. The staff, we have our confidential administrative assistant Haley Dodson with the long title. We have our utilities department manager Jim Green. We have our water department supervisor Cody Meeks. We have our program manager Tristan. Online, we have our general manager Matthew McElany and did you say Mr. Johnson's honor? Administrative technician Eric Johnson.
Okay, cool.
Okay, and in the book, he's honored as a member of the public. Um, we also have director Michael Thomas attending via Zoom. And community member Tina Dickinson. And in person, we have Nemesis and Alan Dean. Okay, so next we have ad hoc subcommittee reports. Um, I think we moved, I believe we completed all of our ad hoc committee assignments several months ago. And so we don't have any current ad hoc committees. And all of the reports from those ad hoc committees were submitted to the board. So unless, um. Our utilities manager comes up with a ad hoc committee that he needs to help him with anything. Right now, we don't have any ad hoc committees. Okay, committee member communications. This is when members of the committee can tell us about anything that they've been working on that's closely related to resources and infrastructure. Does anybody have anything they wish to say?
Kind of have a public service announcement, I guess I think the Cambria Fishing Club is having their annual fish fry this Saturday. Uh, at the Jocelyn Recreation Center. And unlike prior years where you have to buy a ticket ahead of time and show up with it and so on. You can just go to the Jocelyn Center like four o'clock, four thirty, five o'clock. Pick up a dinner there to go. And what they're charging, but it's usually very reasonable and a lot of food. It's going to be, uh, once again fried rockfish, all of which was caught right at Brenda Cambria, as a matter of fact.
What time?
I think they start at five o'clock. And it's not going to be a sit down at the Jocelyn, so your food is going to be to go.
Are you still going to make your fabulous smoked fish, Jeff?
I beg your pardon?
Are you still going to, see, you're trying to make it like. Are you still going to make your fabulous smoked fish spread?
Uh, no.
No.
But I'm glad, I'm glad to hear you praise it. Yeah, I did, I did some recently for a group of folks and it went, it went okay, but. Think I'm done doing it.
Um, one thing I overlooked doing that I need to go back and do this. I was looking at the draft, I muted him instead of my own current agenda. Apologize. Um, I'd like to go around the room and have each of the committee members introduce themselves. And say a little bit about their background that gives them the experience to serve on R and I. So I'm going to start at this end and I'm going to work all the way around. We have two new committee members, so I think it would be helpful for everybody to know who they are and where their area expertise is. So I'll start this end, Mr. Howell.
Okay, uh, yeah, John Howell. I think the major, my main. I, I'm not an engineer. I'm actually a data processing person by trade and by inclination of a musician. But over the past, good heavens, how many years? Eight, ten, something. I've been engaged with the district first as a public commenter. And then as part of the original infrastructure committee and eventually on the board. And then one year as board president, which I have to say was one of the, the most enjoyable experiences. I recommend it to anyone, especially if you're retired and looking for something to do. If you get tired with this committee, you'll run for office and join the board. Uh, but so I know how the district works and I have some, you know, knowledge of the history of the last ten years or so, which is possibly of some help to this committee.
Uh, my name is Mark Meeks. Uh, I guess my background for the most part is, uh, was a contractor for, uh, most of my life in, uh. Plumbing and in fire protection, all of which were commercial. No, I didn't do any residential work. Uh, I was employed, uh, for thirty seven years with, uh, um, in the entertainment industry, working with, uh. Some major studios, Water Brothers and twenty five years at Paramount Pictures. So most of my background has been in, uh, the private sector, never, and that, no, no experience in the public sector at all, but. Mostly in facilities management. Been getting involved in any act production or anything like that. Well, maybe a few, a few things early on in my career, but, um, so that's my experience.
Mr. Webb.
Okay, my name's Jim Webb and, uh, I think the experience I have that's relevant to this committee is, uh. Back in nineteen, oh God, ninety eight, I agreed to be a representative on a state panel that developed the nearshore fishery management plan. And, uh, after that, got appointed as a stakeholder for the Marine Light Protection Act, which was implemented in two thousand and seven along our coast. And I've been actively involved with marine protected areas along our coast, uh, through the, uh, uh, San Luis Obispo Collaborative. Uh, which meets on an ongoing basis and discusses and tries to identify any issues with, uh, current designations for. Reserves and state managed conservation areas. And so I've been doing that since two thousand and seven, been doing it every year. And I also joined something called the CCFRP, which is a group out of Cal Poly. That goes in and measures what happens inside of reserves and outside of reserves and compares the catch data between the two to. Try to gauge, uh, what's happening out there in the ocean. Now they're doing that for eighteen years now. And, uh. I guess I'll kick me out of it very soon because it's getting too old, but, uh. Uh, outside of that, and I've been a longstanding member, past president of the Cambria Fishing Club and support their, uh, pursuit of recreational angling. Here in Central Coast and, uh, they're still out there digging clams and catching fish and. Anyway, I think that's enough.
And if I can add to that. Um, Mr. Webb is a very longtime resident of Cambria and is very knowledgeable about all of our creeks and streams. And, and you know, habitat, endangered species habitat and all of that. He's my environmental person here on this committee as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, great.
So, okay, Mr. Grandma.
Uh, I am Jim Grimald. Uh, I have a background in geophysics and most of my work was seismic processing where they take data from a field and would process it into geological structures. So that would be used to determine whether to drill oil wells. And after that, I worked in environmental, had a couple of environmental jobs. One was hazardous waste disposal where we would package profile and ship. And because to the appropriate disposal facility. I also worked, uh, worked on, uh, utility. Uh, location that have, I worked for the boring companies that installed underground utilities. They'd have to know the exact depths of all the utilities they were crossing, so we would dig them up by exact location. And also working on GeoPro where we take soil and water samples where they're chasing bones of water that had contaminants.
You can see why I. We lost our hydrogeologist and so he's got geological experience.
Who is a very good board secretary.
That's a good it.
Okay, Mr. Seaver.
I'm a retired contractor. I worked a lot in wastewater and water systems. Uh, I've worked in probably every industry that is in California, um, so this gives me something to do to be here.
Even some that probably aren't here anymore.
That's for sure.
So you're a commercial electrical contractor. Okay. Would you guys like to introduce yourselves too, so that our new committee members know what your position does?
Sure. I'm Tristan Reaper. I'm the program manager for the engineering and utilities department and I manage a lot of the behind the scenes work, managing contracts. Kind of helping the project along with scope of work and some along with the utility management. Product management, and then I also manage the water conservation program for the utilities department.
I'm Cody Meeks, I'm the water system superintendent. Um, I do what it takes to keep the water flowing, all the residential, uh, commercial. Pipe repairs, treatment repairs, um, whatever it takes to keep the water flowing down.
Distribution system.
He's a little busy.
Yeah.
Jim Green here, utility department manager. Uh, I've been in this role for over a year and a half now. I've been with the district for seven years initially as a chief plant operator for the then SWF or WRF now. Uh, in twenty nineteen, uh, or late twenty eighteen, I took over the role as water system superintendent and, um. Started to get to work on some much needed improvements in the, in the water distribution system and areas there. Uh, I have over fifteen years as a water treatment, um, operator. Way back a long time ago, I had a contractor's, um. Permit for plumbing, just residential plumbing and stuff, so that's what kind of got my love for water and plumbing started. And, uh, yeah, we're just working with Tristan and the other thirteen, fourteen guys in utilities and keep the water and wastewater operations going. Our, our scope right now is really super focused on projects. And executing some of these projects that have been delayed or deferred maintenance that's been delayed for the last couple of decades. And then permit compliance and then, you know, the health and safety of the community is all things that, uh, that's our kind of our three legged stool that we stand on every day. It's operations, health and safety. And then of course, um, looking forward to improving our system for reliability and sustainability for the future.
And this is our general manager, Matthew McElany on the screen. So we have only two employees that the board of directors actually hired. One of them is our general manager and the other one is our district council. And our general manager oversees all of the staff, all of the department managers. Um, we set policy and he executes it.
Yeah, and I actually want to, I want to say sorry I couldn't be there today. Um, I had to work from home because I have a contractor coming to the house to do some repairs. And if anybody knows about trying to get a contractor to show up anywhere, uh, these days. It's difficult, so again, I apologize for not being there, but, um, for those of you I haven't met, it's a pleasure meeting you and I look forward to working with you.
And I imagine that's a faux background because I can't, having that many computer screens going at once.
Yeah, you know, I, uh, I work remotely from New York as you see the skyscrapers.
Okay, so our job as a committee is to support work directly with the general manager and the utilities department manager. And identifying plans to meet the infrastructure needs of the community, working within the bounds and current potential resources and priorities. Um, of the district and we provide recommendations to the board of directors regarding actions to meet the community's infrastructure needs. And we support other standing committees' resources and infrastructure needs as well. That's pretty much what we're doing here. Okay, so, um, I don't see any hands up for public comment on what we've talked about so far. Does anybody sitting out there have anything to say? Okay, so let's move on to the utility department manager before Mr. Green.
Great, and I, thank you, Chair Dean. Um, I'll kind of recap the most recent events here. You know, we had quite a bit of rainfall. We had some storm hit us last week. It wasn't quite as anticipated, but, uh, I think this is the most prepared that we have been for a potential storm event and atmospheric river event. So I want to thank Cody, Tristan and Superintendent Tony Artho. And definitely the general manager too, who was quick to act and, uh, get extra staff on hand in preparation for this. So I don't know if you guys noticed, but we had several, um, back trucks, trailers and equipment out here in the parking lot set up. So we were ready to go into action. We did receive a lot of, um, rain. I think Rocky View got just under seven inches, so that's very good for the well field. So our well full will be topped up and the rest of that is probably flowing in the ocean at about forty cubic feet per second. But, um, that's another topic for another day. Um, but so water didn't have any issues and I'll let Cody kind of touch on, um, give you a brief synopsis of what happened there, but, um, I'll recap for wastewater. Everything held together, which is fantastic.
No overflow?
No overflow events. Um, Friday, we did peak at one point one two, so that's a million one hundred and twenty thousand gallons.
Wow.
Of water influent for that twenty four hour period.
Wow.
Uh, flows, um, since then have, um, kind of dropped about a hundred GPM every day. And so we're back into about the six hundred gallon a minute range. Um, so we were relating that to I and I, so infiltration and intrusion. Um, during that stormed event, we had wastewater, uh, operators, our collections operators out and they actually cambered some lines. We picked up some manholes on the east ranch where it's just flooding in. The old installation style, um, was not up to today's California building code, so there's definitely a lot of intrusion and infiltration right there. So there's some projects that will be looking to kind of capture that and, uh, I'll touch on that later too, how we're going to prioritize our system for repair and upgrading in the future.
You did a project this year where you raised some manholes, didn't you? Didn't you do like a portion of them?
I think we raised seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
So what, what we do.
So that helped.
Yeah, so we take basically, um, an open manhole, which has got the one inch pick line in it. Um, that one inch hole during storm events is five gallons a minute.
Yeah.
Each of those holes.
Yeah.
So you can imagine times those by, you know, all the bellies in the system, so hundreds. Of five gallons a minute orifices entering into a distribution system too. So, yeah, so the, the rates, uh, flow rates were about as high as we've ever seen besides like our March twenty twenty three storms. But wastewater, uh, the plant and the crew, um, stuck it out and held it all together, so, um. My, my gratitude and, uh, my proud of the guys and, uh, and the plant for sticking together. So, um, that's on the wastewater side. We've also, I want to give a shout out to a couple of our new hires, uh, Christian, who got his grade two water treatment certification already. And then, um, Ryan who passed his class A. Um, driver's exam, got his class A endorsement. That's, that's fantastic, so we appreciate that. Good news on the SST front too, uh, some good, some bad. Uh, we have all of our materials that were at our, our initial vendor FRM's, uh, housing facility for insulation to, to bring over. Um, FRM couldn't meet their contractual requirements or obligations with PG&E, so they are no longer the vendor on this. Uh, or the contract on this PG&E, I've been told, is finalizing, uh, agreement for a contract with a new contractor, so we'll have more to report on that later. But we do have all that equipment back on hand. One of the most key ingredients we have too is our new generators on hand. So I don't know if you guys looked at the, uh, utilities report in the board packet, but they showed some cool pictures of, uh, you know, a huge forty foot steak bed. And a huge, large oversized forklift taking off this huge, you know, twenty foot large generator. But that's on site and we look forward to getting that installed. But we have that for Tristan April.
What was that?
I believe the generator installation in April.
For what do you run?
Uh, no, for the.
Oh, the resort plan. That means whenever the ground dries up enough the weekend.
Yeah, we have to do some underground, so.
Beautiful for a pad for it and stuff.
Right, that is.
So, yeah, wastewater's come around nice. Um, I'll let Cody touch on the storm stuff real quick and then I'll come back and give you some project updates.
Yeah, uh, the water department, we prepped for the storm as well as we could, um, in terms of prepping the tanks, making sure. Or be no tree collisions with any domestic storage. We've topped off all the generators, checked all the boil in-house. And we're glad to report there's no power outages besides the Limerick week before. They get a lot of trees going down, uh, we anticipated that, um, and we had no comm lock during the entire storm. So water department ended up pretty. Good overall for this.
I'm scared, yes. It was amazing the power never went out.
Yeah. So that's, that's my biggest fear now with the, um. Work that we've done at the wastewater plant and water, it's more where we get that saturated effect from the storm and then those thirty mile mile winds come up. That, that's when, I mean, just historically here, that's, that's usually what happens is the power lines go down. So, uh, I think our infrastructure has become more resilient, but we know we have poor G, poor PG&E power here. And then when storms come in and that wind blows, we know that's pretty much inevitable that we're going to have a power line go down. But we made it through the storm, so, um, yeah, fantastic. Let me open up my.
Story around that fight that's leading against the law.
There it is, we'll, we'll get to that. You know, we like a little show and tell, so. Um, let me update you on some of the projects that we have going on here. Soon as my word goes.
Been busy changing out those water meter.
Fantastic, yeah, we can start with AMI, my, my computer links back up here. Um, so we, we've got about, uh. Ten.
Four hundred gallon.
Right, yeah, so we have ten working days. Obviously the rain is kind of slowed the pace. We're not installing electrical equipment in the rain. Um, so, but in the ten days, we have near four hundred meters installed. Our initial estimate for, uh, when we flew the RFP was twenty seven meters a day and we're getting close to forty right now. So our contractor's doing a wonderful job. Um, appreciate all of our hard work. They've given come in on weekends to kind of help get ahead of us at this time. Because we're not, we're unsure how the weather will be in March too, so we're trying to make hay, let the sun shine, as they say here, and, and, and we're doing it. Uh, along with that piece, our contractor for the AMI had, we. Stated in our RFP that would help or assist, well, well, whatever need be, we've had zero internal operational help. Everything's been performed by the con, uh, the contractor. Um, there was a little bit of collateral damage while installing a piece. He stepped on an irrigation line and broke it, uh, went back after the day's end to fix it. So again, we've had, yeah, no involvement from our end, so we're really pleased with our, um. Pro, uh, productivity on that and, you know, how far we've come in a short time.
Is he doing it by himself or does he?
He is, um. He is um got a half and half. Some days he has a helper, some days. So but for the most part, it's it's one person. So yeah, AMI's going um fantastic. Let's talk about Stewart Street tanks here. Um, so we've got three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the EPA funding that we're um just about completed with. It always seems like it's the final document that we're sending in and having approved. And um Lea Teague has just reached out. She's our EPA Funding Officer for it. We have a couple more documents, so we're finalizing an SF four-two-four and SF four-two-four A documents as well as budget narrative and a work plan. And our consultants are working on that collaboratively with us so we can get that back. Um, so we are looking to be funding here and then probably at the next two to three months.
Funding the.
But um are we're receiving funding for the Stewart Street tanks. So we'll get that three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and that three hundred and seventy-five is a matching grant. Obviously, we'll we'll have no problem matching that piece. We have, and they will fund um engineering, some of the design work that we've done behind this there. So um that's coming along down the pike. At March seventh, we have a kind of final meeting with county here for it. It's it's a coastal development permit. So it's one out of six CDPs that the district has gone right now that Tristan and I are navigating. Um, so that closes on March seventh. So they go out for a period and they reach out to all stakeholders and utilities and so forth. And um give the stakeholders and shareholders their chance to to weigh in on on the project. I mean, so we should have that concluded on March seventh and we look to be breaking ground on the project uh by late spring.
On the Stewart Tree Tank?
On the Stewart Tree Tanks, yeah. Additionally, with the Stewart Street Tanks, we'll have some, uh we'll put something up on the website, you know, kind of like a pardon our dust while we're renovating or remodeling that kind of mission. And we'll do some uh door-to-door public outreach as well there in the communities surrounding Richard and Stewart Streets. Just to let everyone know that for the the next year, that there'll be some ratchet guns and a little bit of welding going on there. What we're going to do is we're going to take the one smaller tank down first. So that'll be demo. We're demoing the pad that's there. The current pad that's there is twelve-inch thick pad that does not meet California building code standards. Is now a thirty-six inch depth pad that we're putting on for both of those. So with that combined with the reorientations of the tank due to updated setback requirements of the county planning, that's what triggered the CDP. So we've had this extra little ninety-day window in here um while our develop, our coastal development permit is being reviewed.
So is that pad a complete demo and then just your re-ex, re-exit and over exit and then?
Well, we'll go down three feet and then we'll go down another two feet, recompact. And then pour on top of that, yeah, we'll have a rock there. So we'll do one tank at a time, so that way we don't have both tanks out of service. Where it's, they're cumulative, they're about three hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons of storage. The, our system has one point seven five million gallons of storage. But taking, you know, three hundred thou or even two hundred thousand is a bit vulnerable for us. So that's why we're doing one tank at a time. The project will extend out, it costs a little bit much, but the risk to take both tanks offline sometimes was just not something that we were looking to venture to at this point. Um, weed abatement, if you guys are out on San Simeon Creek Road, um our Title Twenty-Seven Pond, the cease and desist, that Title Twenty-Seven Pond and the well field and the percolation ponds, um we're having weed abatement right now. So we're starting a little bit early because we had that initial rain, then we had that pretty dry January. And uh so everything started popping up. So we have sheep and goats out there doing our weed abatement for us earlier. Um, they're working on the Title Twenty-Seven Pond right now, um kind of on that western end. As soon as they get done and uh it kind of chomp, I wouldn't call it mow that down, we're going to go ahead and internally remove those sound enclosures that are there. That's kind of um not a negotiation, but it's a request from uh the Coastal Commission. So we want to kind of remove that aesthetics and give that view sign, that fusion back to that area. So as soon as we get the weeds downs, we're with trucks and bodies in there, we'll be removing those sand enclosures in the upcoming months here.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
I um was going down Sansimian Creek Road and I went down just past the campground, took that first right turn. Then you guys have that little house down there. And there were a bunch of guys out there working on something. I don't know what is, are are you guys doing work down there near the campground?
Uh, what kind of work? This is interesting.
I don't know. I saw a lot of guys with shovels digging and.
Yeah, maybe like some, doing some build survey work for the transmission line?
No, we've done all of our geo and survey.
Or maybe it was state parks.
Perhaps it was state parks. I know they're building some new domescales or, you know, permanent housing for some of their employees there. So I don't know if that's tied into it. And maybe get with me after. I'd love to see where they were working, where they're digging.
Was something said at one point about fire department doing some training here at Van Gordon House? Could that be it?
Uh, it could be. I don't know that what schedule they've been working on in terms of uh when they've gone out there, but they have been at the Van Gordon House doing training. Could be.
Definitely people working out there.
Yeah, I'm not sure he's farming to be shoveling out there.
I mean, the, I mean, it's been quite a few months, but the fire department did go out there, clear a lot of brush around the house. Um, there was, uh, I forget the company's name, but they went in there and cleaned the interior of the house um for, you know, mess and things of that nature. And there was some cleanup around the property, but this was quite a few months ago, I believe.
Thank you, David. Um, the last major update I want to update you on is Cannon and the Saint Simeon Transmission Line, which I wrote a whole staff report dedicated to that, so I'll cover that in the latter. Cody, anything else you want to touch on?
Just a few little light things.
Okay.
Uh, last week, we held uh interviews for new OIT. Uh, we made a selection.
Sure, yeah, ready for the reveal.
Uh, it's Oscar out of F and R. Uh, we believe he's the best fit for the position um after interviewing multiple people. Uh, then we're excited to have him uh get him going in the water department and bring him up to spec with certs. Uh, earlier this month, we did a fire flow line, our fire line install at nineteen oh one Oxford. We had to coordinate with county roads to uh permit our road closure so we could trench across the street. Uh, that followed up with compaction testing. And while we're on the subject with county roads, uh we took their encroachments, entered around and looked at all of our dig sites because now we have our pavement going on. Our contractor performing the paving for, I think, our twenty-five dig sites is here today, tomorrow and maybe at the Thursday to do all of our patching, the water department does, and we replaced with coal mix. They're doing the final county spec.
So I'll pause you there. So when we go, so we invest, we get a call or we drive by, we see something's leaking. We uh call eight-one-one, make sure there's no other utilities underground that we're going to hit or strike. We're avoiding any other infrastructure. Uh, we go down, um evaluate, repair the damage. Um, then we go ahead and compact back up to county road standards. We in-house do not do the final um carpet tree or the final hot mix layer and and seal. We do the coal mix to temporary repair. But um we have a contractor that we contract separately each year and kind of award different bidders that does the finished work on their up to road county standards. So that's why we have um a pavement contractor come in once or twice a year and do our twenty or twenty-five week patches. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Oh, and then earlier end of last month, early this month, uh we got a leak called in at Moonstone on Moonstone. That's our main transmission line for water to the town. The road's really thick there, lots of traffic. We tried to listen in on where the leak was coming from. It was a whole board in service, so we had essentially pothole around on the service line. Uh, and eventually we found.
We got a little show and tell here for a little, this is just some of the things that we.
This is an old repair that ended up leaking out of the threads. They use the simpler metals and you can see the steel in the middle just completely brought it out.
So they bridge those two PE lines together with a piece of metal?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so this, this, these are the repairs that we don't do in-house anymore in this style here. So anytime you have brass or more noble metal, obviously gold would be the only true noble metal. This gold or the bronze, the brass with the steel nipple in between, the similar metals. Obviously, the lesser metal will corrode first. That's what you see here. So this isn't dirt. This is actually what we call like Cambria cancer or carbuncles. This is the turb, turbacles is the term in the industry they use for that growth. Yeah.
And so we went in uh to replace the entire line. We didn't know if there's more of that on that same line. Um, and the saddle and cork saw thing that goes around the fourteen-inch barman looked exactly like that. We tried to shut it down. It wouldn't fudge. We had to replace. We did the emergency shutdown on Moonstone for a couple hours, swapped in new parts and ran a whole new service up to the dirt.
So now when you see us or hear about us on Moonstone, you're like, why have they been out there for a couple days? This, this is what happens. So when we have, when we experience failures like this, we go ahead and replace the same, the whole line in its entire. And then we'll get down to the saddle, being that's on Moonstone and it's in that that um King Tide Wedge where I'm sure that groundwater and that salty groundwater is coming up and affecting that brass saddle. When the saddle looks like that, that gets replaced too. So that's why we had to have a second day of shut off and isolating Moonstone, which is never a popular thing to do with our commercial customers on Moonstone Beach. But unfortunately, it's collateral damage and it has to be out.
Electrolysis.
Electrolysis, yeah, exactly. Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Tristan, do you have any updates? Provide?
Um. I don't know, but I can.
Well, then we'll go on and proceed if you guys have any more questions or we should probably take a.
Anybody in the committee have any questions?
I have one question regarding the uh the uh St. Simeon Creek. When it's flowing like, like it, like it is now, do we pump water and inject it into the infrastructure or is it just naturally perked?
It's just naturally perks, yeah. We, we, we haven't done any reinjection since the WRF ran on December sixteen, twenty sixteen. So yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody in this public?
Good, sounds great.
Okay, um, I have a hand raised from Ms. Dickinson. This would be public comment on the items we already discussed. And then I'll take public comment on items not on the agenda after we finish with that. So go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. This is on, on the utilities manager's report. So I have a question on the enclosures that um Jim mentioned that are going to be coming down. So at a previous meeting, um there was an estimated, well, there was a hundred thousand dollar budget adjustment. And it was described at forty-five thousand dollars for the removal of the enclosure. So what I was going to ask you, Jim, is who? Hey, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, I don't know. Yeah. So my question was, who will be removing them?
Right, so we've looked at some equipment internally that we're going to use. Um, we're going to attempt, at least make a try internally with water and wastewater help and maybe a little help from F and R if we could uh to remove those in-house to try and save that forty-plus thousand dollars of.
That's what I was hoping. That's what I was really hoping, but then I wonder what happens to hundred thousand dollar budget adjustment that was approved for this, and I don't know why it was a hundred, but now it's not even going to be forty-five.
Um. Well, there was some other permitting um and Flow County is hiring a second or having a second um evaluator for our CDP come in. So that's where the other majority of that uh funding was going to. And if the funding's not used, it'll just roll over in our balance um for the next whole year.
Okay, so, so I have it on that same item. Jim, our, our Chair Dean, can you please um tell me what is proposed for the decommission pond going forward?
Um, we're not supposed to be doing a back and forth, so finish all of your questions and I'll have him answer all of them at once if that's okay.
That's my final question on this item.
Okay, great. Mr. Green?
Um, specify when you mean uh pond. Oh.
Yeah, she's, she finished her question. Okay, she wants to know what the plans are for the decommissioning of the pond.
Well, the pond's been decommissioned uh with Regional Water Quality Boards, so there's more, no more decommissioning. That was at a hearing in twenty nineteen in December that we all attended. Um, so we'll remove the sound enclosures and right now we are just working collaborative with uh Coastal on the liner removal and other mitigation efforts that we need to do for our CDP.
So um let's go ahead and move on to public comments, comment on items not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of this committee. And it's any, yeah, anybody here? Hey. Um, so now we're on to the consent agenda and this is consideration to improve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. We're going to read some minutes and I think only three of you, many members were here officially during the last meeting. So many of you have any corrections, changes or whatever on the minutes. That would be Mr. Reeves, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Webb.
Yeah, I read through a mail.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes? We have public comment. I want to take public comment. Um, sure, go ahead. Ms. Dickinson, go ahead.
Is that for me?
Yes.
Yeah, I had my hand raised and it was taken down. I had a question to follow up on public comment. And my hand disappeared from the screen. So my question is, um, where is the district um with the info hold on the list of items that still had to be addressed? Where are we at this point in time or where's the district at this point in time in fulfilling the yet to be uh completed list of to-do items? Where are we?
So we've completed all the twenty-twenty info hold items as well as the info hold items that were requested of us. Um, so about six months ago when we did our informal drop the county with the CDP. So yeah, those have all been completed and we're just uh arranging and following them in an order that is submittable for us. And uh I I see us submitting that. Um, I'll let maybe Matt, I'll defer to Matt on that, but uh probably within this week or the next.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks, Jim, uh or Mr. Green, excuse me. Um, we do have uh most of our documentation, if not all of our documentation from SWICA, who we hired to help us with some of those documents, policy consistency analysis, uh addendum to the EIR. Um, and so we have those answers compiled in those documents. And uh Ms. Dodson, myself, Mr. Green, Mr. Reaper are then taking that information and answering the info hold items one by one on a document, making sure it's nice and clean. Our hope is I'll have that submitted to the county by Thursday. Um, but we're working, we're working on that. We just want to make sure it's, it's um digestible.
Documents came before the CDP, I thought, because they need to review them about a week ago. Yes.
Thank you. Great question.
Thanks. Getting back on our agenda. May I have a, a motion to um approve the minutes as written?
A motion.
Okay. And then I go have a second. It would have to be.
Second.
Okay. And because I'm, form of the board is three, all three of you have to vote unanimously in order for these to be adopted. So Mr. Reeves.
Hi.
Mr. Seaver.
Hi.
And Mr. Webb.
Hi.
Now we are on regular business and we're going to be reviewing the dates for the twenty twenty-five resources on the legislature committee. We need weights. We went over this with the um the, uh, before the end of the year, but we have two new committee members now. So I wanted to um review the dates again. These are all Mondays with the exception, of course, of today, because it's a Thursday yesterday. And October fourteenth is a Tuesday. And October fourteenth is a Tuesday. Um, and they are all at two o'clock in the afternoon. Did everyone get a chance to look at the dates that were written in the agenda packet? Oh.
Either the schedule or just.
Okay, um. Our utilities manager just informed me that we would not be able to set up this case meeting, but we do have Mr. Reverb. Mr. Meeks here.
They might doing a fine job in my absence, right? I won't even show up anymore.
Just send a check home. Direct deposit.
Okay, and it's um. Columbus Day or what's the other reviews? And the people there on October thirteenth, our meetings on Tuesday, that way. Okay, so is everyone okay with those dates? No one has any conflicts? It's in your agenda packet. Everything's okay. Okay, and then also next week on Wednesday, the twenty sixth. We are having a, it's not on this list because it's a special meeting. We are having a joint meeting together with the finance committee to go on a tour of the water reclamation facility.
What date?
That that will be next Wednesday, the twenty sixth at one o'clock. We will all meet out at Water Reclamation Facility on San Tinean Creek Road. And our staff will give us a tour of the water reclamation facility. So is.
That's the one out there.
On San Simeon Creek Road. So is everybody available for that day?
At what time?
One o'clock.
We'll have two things going on next Wednesday. We'll have the bathroom drop in the restaurant.
Sure.
Um, and then in the afternoon, we'll have the the two committees touring the um W R F.
You're not required to be there for the eight thirty dropping of the restroom.
We will drop it.
But it's interesting. It's. It's interesting. So I'd really like to see it. Um, but the one in the afternoon, that's, you know. You're not absolutely required to be there, but it is, it is an R and I in finance meeting. And since we, since we work so much with. Issues regarding the water reclamation facility, I highly recommend that you all attend. Also, we have another. Yes.
One o'clock.
It's not on the list because it's a special meeting. We have one other special meeting. With the finance committee. And that will be Wednesday, March fifth at ten o'clock. And we will all be going out to the wastewater treatment plant to have a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. And to see an installation of an A I A M I meter endpoint.
Okay.
Okay, so that is um. March fifth at ten o'clock.
And both will need sign-in sheets, Haley?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and a waiver, a waiver form will be. So um it, did you uh catch those, Mr. Grimmel?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if you guys have never seen it, we'd like to have you out. You can see the footprint of it. Um, we have it. Operating in a cycle. We're not pumping or reinjecting, but we have it running in a loop system. So you can kind of hear how quiet the plant runs and. How efficient it is. So you get to kind of kick the tires, so to speak, and see it in operation and uh it's it's a good walk.
And also, um, you know, we we did meet with some A T C people out there a couple days ago. And while we're out there, we also got a um. Little preview of one zero liquid discharge pilot program. Where that project would be situated and where if we went forward with a zero liquid discharge installation. Where it would be in an explanation about how that would work. So hopefully while we're out there, you can have the same explanation from our. Guys here. Okay, so um this was not an action item. I just wanted to review the dates with you to make sure you all knew what we were going to be doing this year. Also, um. Next month, well, if you have future agenda items, okay, so um. Any public comment on the dates? Okay. So now we're going to receive and discuss the proposed on-call civil engineering contract for water and wastewater emergency repairs. And consider forwarding a recommendation to the C C S D Board of Directors, Mr. Green.
Right, great. Um. So even so, I I'll start off with like even slow, city of slow has three papered engineers onsite, use. Third-party contracting or consultant services. Um, it's a way of absorbing liability is also a way of vetting plans or another engineer with a separate engineer. Versus what they think should go on. It's 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 a fantastic opportunity for us to um. Fulfill kind of our engineering roles here since we don't have an engineer on on stand here. Um, but like I said, there's the slowest three of them still use on-call operating. Um, or engineering uh services. What that does is they can perform review of contractor submittals, review draft plans. Specification provided by other agencies or or vendors and assist with project management and um what we use them of. What we use contracted on um, gosh, sorry, guys, uh engineered on-call services for is like alternative assessments. We've got in our mind how to replace pumps and we 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 know what we want to do here. But we'll run that by an engineer to say, well, you know, if you did this, this would be more efficient or, you know, have you ever thought about this process? So it's kind of a good way. To get us out of our box and 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 thinking. Um, two recent uh developments have kind of really brought this to the forefront. Uh, we've had our lift station before and it has a pump currently down on it and then so it's. Really only operable pump started failing. So we started looking at that lift station. It was one of the E C M's in our S S team. You remember all the uh years back that was removed from there. So we knew there was some. Room for improvement there. Um, so we've been working with uh M K N on some of the design and so forth for that. Uh, also. Santa Rosa three well treatment. Um, so the treatment head we know is at uh rodeo grounds there. When we have that March twenty twenty-three storm, we lost a lot of stream bank there. Well, with that stream bank um gave us C T credit, which is concentration versus time. So while we're processing, we hit the raw water with our disinfection. It has to be in the system or reaches or a tank. For a certain amount of time before it goes out into the distribution system. So by moving it, losing a half a percent with that stream bank. We had to rethink our Santa Rosa well three treatment process. So again, we brought in consultants to kind of help us walk through that. Um, and so instead of reaching out to these guys on a one-off, uh, we'll have a designated consultant on hand for that. Uh, we've got prices that are already worked out and um. M K M's been wonderful with us. They have uh decades and decades of institutional knowledge. With for us. Um, they've done a lot of work for us kind of pro bono too. There's a, my first call is usually to John Hanlon. Or Julia there at M K N to kind of say, am I going in the right direction? Am I thinking this right? We get, you know, I think Tristan and I could, we kind of get. Lost in our own envelope and can't think outside of it. So you kind of use them as a sounding board for projects. So it's it's a small amount. Um, which we probably won't even exceed during the year, but it's just nice to have that go-to guy where you can get stamp plans from. Review of uh another vendor's assessment, like we had looked at this lift station and some other vendors, Christians, others said, hey, you should do this or do that here. So we kind of take that concept from them and run it by our on-call engineers to to vet that.
Peer review. Right, like a peer review.
Right, exactly. It's a peer review. So that's what we're really looking um for this. A lot of these. So emergencies only happen at night and on weekends, we always say. So we need something that we can kind of react quickly to. Um, so when we have like a pump failing inside a lift station and it's our last pump. This is a a process that needs to be expedited. We need to review, uh, look at, evaluate what sort of replacements or what we can do. And that needs to happen in a timely process. So this is going to help kind of eliminate that lag time in between repairs. And um that we couldn't ask for a better source than M K M on this. So um. I don't know, Tristan, if you wanted to add anything to that, then we'll receive questions.
I'm gonna say nothing that you haven't already said, especially the part about how they've done a lot of. Like now, I mean, now, like Jim said, we. Call them up and ask questions and then oftentimes they don't get paid for it. If it doesn't turn into a project. So this will be a chance to kind of make it equitable for them. So they can bring out the phone for us.
The acronym is M K N?
Mike, Nunnely and Associates. Whether they go by M K M.
And you mentioned, wasn't there a lot of money involved that I know really, how much, what are we talking about in terms of? So it's a not exceed contract for twenty five thousand dollars for our call services. And you can see their rates in there. Usually they'll take two or four hours. So we're looking at, you know, five hundred to thousand dollar kind of increments or task orders. That will be um exercising or invoicing. As needed. I mean, if we have a great year and nothing fails and. We've got a contract that we won't need or use and.
Seems not to exceed listed on here. I see the hourly rate.
Just the hourly rate. Okay, well.
But the not. But then. No. So the not to exceed is twenty five thousand. Okay. For what time period?
Is.
And they're kind of like a mechanical engineer.
They're civil. Civil, um prioritizing water and wastewater.
Yeah, they specialize in water and wastewater. It's just another reason they got a lot of industry knowledge as well as the institutional. Highly qualified.
Any other questions from the committee? Two members of the public sitting here. Okay, I have a hand raised. Um, Miss Dickinson, you want to go ahead and. Give us all of your questions and I'll have Mr. Grimmel answer all at once.
So it's related to what um. Committee member Webb brought up and that was, I'm I'm looking at the fee schedule. So the hourly rate goes anywhere from a hundred and thirteen dollars all the way up to three hundred and eight dollars, depending on what department. So, I mean. I I'm not understanding uh all all these different categories and yet. Um, to say that the contract is for twenty five thousand dollars a year. And maybe Mr. Green can explain this a little bit better, but. For example, I mean, communications and administrative, and then you've got planning engineers, project management, construction management services. That, and these are really um high hourly ra- rates. So I don't know how we get around. To uh, you know, a minimum or maximum twenty five thousand a year. Because there are lots of categories here that. Does that mean if somebody comes out? Or more than one person comes out that you're actually paying? Different departments of A M K N each time you get an invoice from them?
Uh, well, M K N is one group. There's not different departments that will be invoiced from individually. So and this again is just like a peer review service and sometimes they do come on site. Um, what you're seeing at the the three hundred dollars is that's for like a senior or principal and usually ours are in the engineering one to um. Principal range there. This 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 is again peer review. This isn't senior level review for the majority of these projects.
Okay, anybody else? No. Okay, so this is a um discuss and consider item, which means we are going to be taking a motion and a vote. To um recommend this to the Board of Directors if you all approve. So do I have a motion to go ahead and um. Approve forwarding a recommendation to the Board of Directors on this? Um, everybody's hands raised. Okay, Mr. Grimmel um made a motion. Who's second?
I'll second.
Okay, so. Okay, so I'm gonna do a full call. Mr. Grimmel, how do you vote?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Meeks?
Uh, hi.
Mr. Webb?
Hi.
Mr. Hal?
Hi.
And Mr. Seaver?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on to the next agenda item. Which is to receive and discuss, uh, this this, receive and discuss the project status update for San Simeon Water and Wastewater Transmission Line. Project.
Great, so we've had a little bit of slowing in dealing with Caltrans for a right-of-entry or uh an encroachment permit. What you meant there. We need to do some geological surveying and um infrastructure locating. So we can finish the design set without. Um, so right now, Caltrans is kind of holding this up right there.
This is bearing the plastic pipe that's.
This will be for horizontal drilling or open-cut trench installation of that H D P pipe. Yes. The two H H D P pipes will have that treated wastewater ethylene and then our treated water domestic um coming the other way from San Simeon there.
And the alignment that we 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 hit on was we follow the, we follow the highway. That's what you need the Caltrans uh permit for.
Right.
So then we're gonna build a receiving hole and then shoot underneath the, shoot underneath the uh the creek, right? And doing, you know, those are separate permits. The Caltrans. Uh, right of access, I guess you'd call it.
Each stakeholder has their own permit requirements. So, yeah, we'll be with uh C D F W, so Department of Fish and Wildlife. Uh, State Parks, who we've been working very collaboratively with and then of course Caltrans.
Okay, so we have two new committee members. Um, you may not know what we're talking about. So can you give a little bit of background of what happened to the transmission lines and why we're replacing them? And I should have asked ahead of time. You don't happen to have a picture of your Dina? No.
Um, yes.
Pull up diamond.
Yes, a diamond.
Yeah.
Can you hear it, sir? We allow him access to. He can bring up the project. He can get in, show us on the cutaways. So Jim, um, Christmas Eve, eve, twenty twenty-one. About nine A M. In the preserved enhanced uh wetlands that is state parks land. We had about a seven-foot geyser coming out of our fourteen-inch main there. Um, there's a transition from ductile iron. To A C pipe that we think failed.
There's one more in the past.
And there was one more in the past. It was about seventeen years ago. So we've needed to. Do a permanent repair on this for quite a while, quite a while and uh going in and performing that in. That nature preserve that was state parks was just not gonna happen. So. Where that meets or marries to the rest of the system is at exotic gardens or what is down right now or centrally grown. Uh, right at the uh edge there, um. The transmission line goes through state parks. The new point here, I didn't read my corner, I'm sorry. We can't. Bring this up a little higher or expand that out a little bit. Get in there, little military. Okay. If we can expand it a little bit. Okay, so yeah, so you're you're showing our existing. This this is actually the the, looks like the wastewater line that's out there, but our water line falls about the same. Right here. So what we can see if we look at, if if we can blow that up just a little bit more, I want to show the lineup exactly where this is gonna go. Fantastic. Um, maybe if we could just go north a little bit so I can show the bottom part of that page, please.
No, by the way.
I thought I was the only one with no sense of direction.
Just a little bit more and I can show. So what we have here is exotic. Gardens right here, right at the end here. So as we meander through this natural enhanced preserve that is the wetlands. We will abandon that in place as per state park's request and then travel this way about seven, uh, just about fifty feet. And then we're gonna either open cut trench or horizontally drill to, now if we can drag that back down south again. So this is a twenty seven hundred and fifty foot stretch right there, just over half a mile. We're going to come in. Uh, horizontally drill underneath their uh vehicle bridge. And go into the Washburn Days parking lot. Well, we will have an open-cut pit about ten by ten. That'll be the receiving pit and also the sending pit, which will then horizontally drill from that parking lot. Under the creek. And then over into our property, which is right along the Washburn Campground Frontage Road, which will be our staging area setup and installation area for that. Um, where it's currently uh mounted to right now is that pedestrian bridge going under. So the ductal line, it's that's just been hanging underneath this pedestrian bridge out in that environment. So duct aligned, it's that's just been hanging underneath this pedestrian bridge out in that environment for all these years. It's in fairly good condition. It's not a huge concern, but if we're taking all of our infrastructure out of state parks, we wanted to make sure we wanted to remove it from that bridge as well. And then we'll have our own areas to work on it here on our property and then we'll have an encroachment permit with Caltrans for this work right along here. So this work right along here, that's where we're looking for that encroachment permit. You've got. Fiber optic in there, got gas, AT&T, spectrum, every utility.
And you're gonna open trench that run that that section or you're gonna drill it?
Well.
I thought it was open trench.
It's.
We're asking Caltrans.
We're asking Caltrans. It's it's really up to them.
Yeah.
We we'd like to drill it.
Yeah.
That'd be our preference, but it's up to Caltrans. Open cut trench would be a little bit cheaper. But it it has its issues with that as well too. So we would like to horizontally drill it. But again, we'll need to know where those utilities are and get in there with that Caltrans encroachment permit. We our consultant initially sent that in in January of twenty or no, we we applied, we submitted our application back in November. We've got word back from Caltrans, January thirteenth, that are they they needed some more information. Basically, our application was incomplete. So our consultant has worked on that and sent them back that information back last week. It's not unheard of to kick the ball around with Caltrans two, three times. So we're hoping that there's not any more information that they need. But they've got the information that they requested, resubmitted to them. So hopefully we'll hear from them within the month. Again, that's that's the only piece holding this up right there. But while that's going on. We're completing the sixty five design, sixty five percent design plan for that. And we've also started engaging with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We're looking for to see if the SEQA determination is required for this. And if we need an initial study of mitigated negative declaration, it's being prepared for that as well. So while we're kind of waiting for Caltrans to figure out their piece, we're moving forward with the other permitting processes going forward. So we we still look forward to a summer start for this project. This isn't a year long project or many months. It's about a a real month of construction for us here. So. Yeah, we'd like to get in and get out before the wet season. And get that done. So all in the meantime, all the other environmental surveys have been completed. We do have historic and cultural surveys. Which are not seasonally dependent that need to be performed. And again, we got a late summer date for groundbreaking. We we think that's reasonable and our consultants do as well.
Any other questions?
Hey there. With the C CSD up in San Simian basically falling apart and. I assume some of the management of that is gonna end up with you guys because. You're well relatively well funded and staffed. Organization. Is there? There's gonna have to be some synergies of piping. Between what they're doing and what we're doing and what you're responsible for in terms of treatment and so on. I mean. Have you have you thought about trying to coordinate that further? Rather than, I mean, this just gets the water and wastewater line to the treatment plan of San Simian. But what about getting up? All the way to the town of San Simian.
So internally, we have been kind of. Speaking with Cannon, just and I have about putting the third line in there and just capping it for future installation because again, we agree while you're down there. Yeah, well, you got that hole already. It's only gonna cost you material.
Right.
Once you're at that point. So yeah, we've definitely had that conversation in turn with our consultant Cannon and ourselves. We think it's a good idea. Again, we need those results. From that that geo and that that infrastructure search to know if we have the width, the breadth, because if you're putting a domestic water line in. Your sanitary sewer line has to be ten foot off of that. So we've got about a twenty five what twenty five foot swath in which to deal with. Now we'll see if we can use that entire twenty five foot of in actuality, we only have a ten to fifteen. If it's a ten to fifteen foot swath, we only have room to put a pair of pipes.
It's gotta be lower too, doesn't it? The sewer line's gotta be. That's a forced line though, isn't it?
Technically, yeah, it's boosted, but I think the PSI at the end is about twenty five. So it's not very high. As opposed to water, which is what, two and a quarter? Yeah, it's about two hundred and twenty five PSI coming off our wellhead going, coming into town, into the city. So yeah, it start different in pressures, but yeah, they're both considered pressure pipe.
Did you have some questions, Mr. Grimal? Oh, it looked like you started duration.
Do you have any connections with Caltrans? Do you have any connections with Caltrans?
No, no.
But I think he said experience with what you're talking about, didn't he? All of that. Okay, so anybody else on the committee have any questions for Mr. Green?
Did you say, when when is there an expected? You know, construction start date yet at this point, or we're just not there yet?
I mean, we're hoping for an August start date. And we don't think that's out of the question. And our consultants don't agree.
Okay, and either our gentleman over there have any question? Okay, Mr. Dickerson has your hand raised. You have some questions, Mr. Dickerson?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions because this certainly what Mr. Webb has just brought up and what has been raised. You know, back and forth with my attending Sensimian. CSD meetings. Is the question of whether our C CSD. Has any plans of merging? Can a Sensimian with Cambria? Because if that's the case, I think there needs to be a whole lot more transparency. In front of the public when a third line is being considered on this project. That's something I had never heard before and you know, why is this happening in the RNI committee meeting? With no, you know, the public has has not been aware of this. The other question I have is the cost to the rate pairs for this really huge project. I I haven't seen anything related to the cost. And how it's going to be paid.
The the first question is kind of out of scope for our agenda item here. Second one is cost. We have an engineering, a list engineering estimate of four million dollars for the two lines for installation. And we spent what two hundred thousand or one eighty seven on the consulting and engineering portion. So you're looking at a point about a two point two million dollar project. And if General Manager McLaughlin has any update on the the funding for that.
Yeah, we we don't have an update on the funding. Obviously, there's several projects in the district that need to be completed. That basically exceed our general fund reserves. There's just really no way around it. When you take into account the fluent line, the Stewart Street tanks. The water meter, the brass bodies that may eventually need to be replaced after the AMI system is in. In the works that which will inform us on our brass bodies. That's a multimillion dollar project. Lift station B four, which is failing, that needs to be moved. That's a two plus million dollar project. So. That that's that's the question in the room, right? That's the elephant in the room. How how is it gonna be funded? So we're gonna work on those funding mechanisms over the next, you know, few months and what our options are as a district. And we're working through RNI and the finance committee on long range financing. Projections along with prioritizing these projects based on on our. Our revenues to the Sensimian discussion. I'm sorry, I stepped away for a second. We have not engaged in any conversations with Lafco. We have not had any. Me any meaningful conversations with the county about taking over Sensimian. We've had discussions. With the county when they called about, you know, have we ever shared services? Have, do they help us? Do we help them? You know, what have we done in the past? Has there any been any type of partnerships? And the the answers were basically at one point we assisted them with, was it trucking over water, Jim?
Yes.
So. That's the extent of those conversations. Now. Am I positive that at one point the county may come knock on the C CSD's door? As an option for Sensimian? Of course, the county, I'm guessing, is no more enthused about having to take over Sensimian than. Then, you know, perhaps some of our committee members, but those those conversations will happen. And when they happen, you know, it'll be brought before the board or a committee like this. These conversations, this this meeting is a form of transparency because it's being brought up here and we're not running from it. All I can tell you is this is being broadcast publicly. It's being recorded and those questions are asked and we're answering them. There's nothing to bring forward. In terms of transparency, when there's been no discussions about us taking over Sensimian. So will those discussions happen? One hundred percent the county is gonna come ask us about our interest in Sensimian. And when they do. That'll be a board discussion, committee discussions. There'll be several pieces of analysis, budgetary analysis. And again, that'll be a board decision, not a staff decision. But as far as transparency go, it doesn't get any more transparent than being recorded and put on YouTube and on the district webpage. So. Hope that answers the question.
I'm gonna add to that, Matt. Thank you. So when we have conversations internally with our consultants, that's to kind of derive. Is this doable? What's the cost? So those are the conversations that we're gonna have internally with staff and our consultants before we go into the general public. We're gonna dot our i's and cross our t's and have the most accurate and up to date information. So yeah, we're gonna have those conversations without broadcasting it to the community. So. Part of our talk.
Preliminary.
Absolutely, preliminary discussion.
Okay. This was a informational item, so we're taking no action on it at this meeting. So next we have discussion and consideration of an in-stream flow study of Santa Rosa Creek and consideration of forwarding a recommendation to the board directly.
So still wanted to do such a fantastic job on San Simian Creek in stream flow study, which even did the lower reaches of Van Gordon. Answered a lot of questions that were kind of lingering out there for decades. We want to do the same thing for an in-stream flow study for Santa Rosa Creek. This year really brought to a head that. We pumped our total dry season maximum. We were like an acre foot down short. We basically thought our dry season max diversion from May through October is a hundred fifty five point three acre feet. I think we did a hundred fifty three point five acre feet though. While pumping from that, the creek ran the entire time. So there are some allegations or some hearsay to our. Dry season would cease flow.
Currently pump out of San Simian, I mean, Santa Rosa?
Just a second. Let him start where the zoom kicked off and we're gonna then ask your question. You just explained what the answer to the study would do. I don't know where it kicked off on this. We just lost internet and now it's back.
So the in-stream flow study plan helps us to plan development and assess water needs. For for us, for the creek and then for sensitive species and helps kind of guide our pumping operations as as well. So. Yes, I forgot where we left off on that. I'm not sure where we left off, but is that is that pretty much?
Mr. Meeks had a question.
Yeah, and you answered it. You said, yes, we do. We currently pump out of that.
Oh, right. So Santa Rosa is is there really for emotional or emotional urgency? But it's there for emergency diversion and then therefore seasonal dry season diversion. We we operate at the Santa Rosas from May through October. So we kind of spell or rest the Santa Sensimians because usually by May, but not this last year. Flow ceases. So when that flow ceases, that's when you really see that drawdown in that aquifer take effect. That's why we divert pumping over to the Santa Rosas. So we kind of halt any impact or any reduction in that aquifer and then get our draw for the community from Santa Rosa.
And you got how many well, how many pump sites?
We have two. We have Santa Rosa well three, which is over there by Tin City. And then we have Santa Rosa well four, which is Coast Union High School.
And to touch base on that, another part of our effort with this is if anybody's read some of the coastal commission documents, notice violations. There is some discussion and debate at the coastal commission level about our ability to draw from the Santa Rosas. Only during they they classified as emergencies and for us, it's an emergency when. There's a threat to saltwater intrusion from overdrafting Sensimian. So we do pull from the Santa Rosas at times. And so I think this in-stream flow study would also help inform our pumping and what it's doing environmentally into the creek. And and that's a that's an act of good faith on part of the district to do this type of a study on the Santa Rosas because we do pump from the Santa Rosas. Hundred and fifty five acre feet, Jim?
Is our maximum dry season diversion. We have a total of two hundred eighteen acre feet annually.
Yeah, so it it's a measure of good faith on our part in addition to everything else that Jim said. So that that's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question? Nobody on the committee? Mr. Dujic?
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, I sat down on some of the earlier discussions of this and and I think the proposal is a good one. It it just has a little bit of adjustment that I would like to suggest and I understand if you'd be hesitant to do this now, you might need to want to do it later, but it's something that's missing from there. For the benefit of guys who haven't been on the on the committee, I'll just take a minute here to literally to give some background on Santa Rosa Creek and trust me, I won't take more than three minutes overall. So we've had recurring flood issues on Santa Rosa Creek. This whole community is part of Santa Rosa flood basin. Santa Rosa Creek flood basin and there've been recurring problems which got essentially, they were mitigated back in two thousand and nine. When the when the bypass was built here across the street and all the stuff was cleaned up. And everything flew like the flew load like the dickens through here. However, since that time, the invasives have really run rampant in the Santa Rosa Creek watershed. There are probably thousands of eucalyptus trees growing, little ones, big ones, huge ones, dead ones. And all kinds of other invasives that have grown up in there. So. This study plan is gonna focus on steelhead habitat. And however, I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that some of that so-called habitat or maybe considered habitat is invasive. And is down eucalyptus trees and is contributing to the flood risk. So somewhere along the line, we need to make that connection. That says. Here's our in-stream flow study information. And now the way it stands right now, that in-stream flow study doesn't have any reference to invasives whatsoever. So it would be impossible to tell or differentiate between habitat. That is made up of invasives that need to be removed. Or habitat that should be there because it's good stuff and it's historically the native species of plants and such and such. So I would just want to be sure that when these folks are really experts in this area, great people to do this work. Want to make sure that we don't trip over ourselves later, have to come back and spend another fifty thousand dollars to do an invasive study and then come back and say, oh, look, we're messing up the habitat. That we found in the in-stream flow study because it was invasive. So that's my only concern. They're certainly qualified to make that kind of a determination and do that kind of analysis. So something to consider. How you approach it's gonna be, you know, up to you. Just want to make sure. So something to consider, how you approach it's gonna be, you know, up to you. Just want to make sure you it it's 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 evident here. That's it.
Never respond to you. This really is intent to see what affects our pumping is happening on the creek.
Right.
And the flows.
Yeah, and and not just the um steelhead. It's in any federally endangered species. So the California red like a frog and yeah, those other things. But yeah, absolutely. We are, we still haven't had a kickoff or initial meeting with Stillwater yet, so those will be topics of discussion.
Appreciate you bringing it up. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, Ms. Dickerson has your hand is.
Let's see. Thank you. All right. Well, I find this fascinating that this district wants to do an in-stream flow study on Santa Rosa after all these many, many years. And with all the issues that the district seems to be having with uh getting the CDP for the WRF. And I'm all, I I mean, honestly, because I have followed this for so long, deeply, deeply more than any of you, I would say. And commenting on multiple with multiple agencies on this on this EWS SWF WRF. I find it absolutely fascinating that now the district is turning to Santa Rosa. Because here's what I heard from the Coastal Commission when I asked about this very recently, and I'll just read this brief paragraph from Devon Jackson. Mr. McElhany was copied on copied on this, as was Mr. Green and Mr. Luster. Uh, good morning, Tina. It's our understanding that the district is pursuing an in-stream flow study for Santa Rosa Creek as as well as San Simeon Creek, so that they can gain a better understanding of how their operations on both creeks impact the surrounding environment. I've been told that this will also allow them to anticipate drought conditions and ensure they can meet future demand for their existing service connections. I've CC said, I've CC'd staff, so I've just already told you who was included here. So uh it we already know that the WRF was supposed to be the tool, the vehicle by which drought conditions could be met. I'm wondering if the WRF will not be able to get approved even by county. I mean, is this why the C CSD is turning now to Santa Rosa?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. This has nothing to do with the WRF, CDP, or it just has to do with our seasonal operation there. Totally. Do not read further into this, please. Next question.
Okay, anything else?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
It seems absolutely something that we should be doing. This town depend has two aquifers that it depend upon. Why would we not want to know how our pumping affects the health of that aquifer?
To have a plan.
Yeah, so exactly. This is a no-rater.
I think, agree.
Should have been years ago. Exactly. That's probably the biggest. There's a whole lot of stuff that should have been ten years ago.
Okay. Okay, so this was a discussion and consideration of the in-stream flow study and whether to forward a recommendation to the Board of Directors regarding this. So do I have a motion?
I believe.
Okay. The second?
Second.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Mr. Grimaw?
Aye.
Mr. Seaver?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved unanimously. Thank you. So now we are on future agenda items. One of the things I want to do and and hopefully I can get you all to go on to the district website at some point before the next meeting and read the standing committee bylaws. And we will be reviewing the standing committee bylaws. I think you all know the um or whatever you call it, to get on the C CSD website and just what it what do they uh put in the search by box, your standing committee bylaws?
By bylaws.
Bylaws, okay. So please go ahead and look at the standing committee bylaws because we're gonna review them a little bit when we come back on our next meeting. I think you all received notice that um you need to take ethics training A B one, two, three, four. Um, that is something that was added to the standing committee bylaws a few months ago and is something that the Board of Directors have to do every two years.
We're doing every two years now.
Every two years. Okay. We also have to do Brown App training. There is a free review of the Brown App in the A B one, two, three, four, but it's not a very in-depth review. So we most likely will be having a meeting where everyone will do Brown App training. Okay, um. Mr. Mathelain. Do we have um the manager, department managers coming to R and I next month to go over their request for the budget for the C I P list?
Yes.
That's something.
Yeah.
Okay, the next month, I think you guys, the three of you that return, remember that last year we had all of the department managers come and tell us what their priorities were for the upcoming year for the C I P list. C I P stands for capital improvement project. So that will be um on the March meeting as well. Um, is there anything else that you want to put on the March agenda?
Um, the manhole issue is kind of heightened and we want to address that. And um it's a little late for this season, but a great time to start is when the dry season starts, so April first. So I'd love to bring you kind of like a manhole update um of projects. So what locations? Again, what cost? And um kind of what the scope of it is. Obviously, the scope is to stop the stormwater and groundwater leaking into our system. But what's the extent of that? What's what kind of excavation, whatever that's, we'll, I'd love to bring that forward. The big topic will be, we're gonna discuss probably like our whole C I P. And then from there, I look to you to kind of help us prioritize that.
Okay, um, but a couple of other things that we didn't have quite ready to do on this month's agenda, something about a tractor. Are you ready for that or?
Oh, yeah, the E B tractor.
We do, we do. We need to um hopefully we'll hear word that that's uh state-funded. So we need to validate that voucher.
It's so vulnerable. Okay, anything else?
Uh, C I P is the big one. Cody, do you have?
Yeah, that usually takes us a little while.
It'll be, we have a lot.
Yeah, because we are the manager for every department here, the fire department, water, wastewater, facilities and resources. Finance manager, you know, you get all the Toronto staff members here for that meeting. So
okay, um, does any of the committee members have anything they want to see added to the agenda? No. Okay, I think we have the first pretty full meeting for next month. Okay, so just a reminder, next Wednesday, one o'clock at the water reclamation facility, it is on San Simeon Creek Road. Okay?
I was gonna say, just to add to that, bring your high clearance vehicle. Don't bring, I was gonna say the road is, it's not terrible, but definitely you want a couple inches of ground.
If you have a Mazda Miata, you're probably not getting in there. Okay, so meet us at the wastewater plant at fifty-five hundred Keith Lane. We've got a four-seater truck we can bring.
Oh, that's all you have is a low clearance?
Yeah.
He's my neighbor. He can ride with me.
You can help.
You wanna ride?
I gotta, I gotta pick up that we can. It's a four-seater.
Okay.
Or a five-seater.
When do you need the secretary's notes?
Ms. Dodson, when you need the?
A week before the next meeting. But it's it's the Monday before the meeting.
Okay, so I got a little while I can work on and and
Yeah, and then
Coordinate with you.
Yeah, Derek always sent them to me first in case he spelled somebody's name wrong or whatever.
Oh, I spoke to everyone.
And I helped, I helped him, I helped. I helped him a little bit with that and he did whatever he needed to edit and then he sent it to to Ms. Hudson.
So could I get a blank one of these, one of the forms also for?
Um, you have a a PDF version that he can fill in online. I think that's what Derek did.
I just sent him the Word version. I can send it to him. I don't have access to email right now, but she emailed me the Word version. I'll forward it to you.
Just so I can print it up. That'd be great. Additionally, guys, if there's any other R and I topics that you want to address in the future, please email me, tell Karen. Tell Haley, um, email me, whatever. Yeah, if you guys have some burning topics, there's something that you want covered, whether it's a project or just maybe like a revisit or a one-on-one on something, we'd love to provide that for you. As well as who's ever tuning in out there as well.
Well, we have one director.
Yeah, just reach out if there's some topics. We we know it's important to us, so you know, those are kind of the burning topics that we want to cover. But if there's something nagging that you never knew about or wanted some background on, we'd love to provide that for you.
And we start coordinating on the next month agenda almost right away after we finish the meeting and
Let's wait, yeah, this next day.
It's a it's a process that takes us all the way up until Ms. Dodson saying, where is it?
You got something on optong.
So, okay, so if no one has anything else good meeting and it is three forty-one and I, if no one has any objections, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.